So over fifteen seconds early, I'm going to call the city board. Thank you all for coming to our planning commission meeting tonight. Going to excuse Commissioner Elmer, who's unable to make it tonight. And that will get started. So that brings us to item number two, which is consent and approval of the planning commission minutes from November eighth, 2023. You all get an opportunity to read those any concerns. That'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I I will motion to approve our planning commission meeting minutes from November eighth, 2023.
A motion to second.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was all of us. Minutes approved. All right. Item number three, is a public hearing. Read this verbatim here. The Harrisville Planning Commission is holding a public hearing to take comments for and or against Harrisville Ordinance 549, an amendment to the mixed use and infill general plan map to include parcels eleven dash zero two seven dash zero one zero four, eleven dash zero two seven dash zero one one eight, and eleven dash zero two seven dash zero zero two three, eleven dash zero two seven dash zero two two, eleven dash zero two seven dash zero 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 four, and eleven dash zero seven dash zero zero two four located approximately two sixty five east Larson Lane. Rules for a public hearing, please come up, state your name.
We need you to motion something.
Yes, we'll get there. I'm going to review this first, and we hold a motion. So the rules are, you come up, you state your name, share your thoughts. It's not a discussion, it's here, we're here to listen to you. So please tell us everything, ask questions if you need to, but we may not be able to give you answers right now. And if we did give answers, they'd be after everyone has done sharing. Just speaking to the microphone, each person will have three minutes. We have a timer up here. First person gets two minutes fifty eight seconds. Please be respectful, no applause, no pointing fingers, no shouting. And if you're disorderly, we'll let you know and ask you to leave. But hopefully, nobody's disorderly tonight. So with that, can we get some introduction to what this is about before we start?
Sure, I'd be happy to, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The city has received an application to consider a number of parcels south of Washington Lane to be considered eligible for mixed use infill on our overlay map. The history or background on our general plan, these parcels were not included on the original mixed use overlay map that was adopted in 2019. During discussions leading up to the adoption of that map, there were cities identified in the, the, excuse me, areas identified in the city that would be eligible for mixed use overlay. The mixed use and infill development ordinance allows for a negotiation process to take place between the city staff and any potential developers to meet the general plan vision. And in the subsequent four years since the adoption of the general plan, the state legislators have increased the requirements on local governments to provide more affordable housing through moderate income housing regulations and strategies that were required to be adopted by cities. And there is some analysis showing what where this area is located in, with perspective on where the current mixed use overlay area is and our newly identified Larson Lane as a major collector in our transportation study that was recently adopted.
With that introduction, seeing the open this hearing, I get a motion to open the public hearing.
A motion to open a public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that was all of us. This is your opportunity to come, tell us your thoughts and opinions for or against. Please come share.
Hello, my name is Greg Montgomery, two thirty one Larson Lane. A couple of things, just as a background. When the general plan was done, I talked about the mixed use along Washington, it was talked about a one lot debt taking place along Washington Boulevard, or whatever major corridor there was a one lot debt. So that's why Larson Lane is not included in that, nor should it ever be included in that. My recommendation to you is that this plan amendment should not be adopted for three reasons. One, it does not comply with the moderate income housing plan that the city recently adopted and amended. In the staff report, it says that it talks about transit corridor, but the actual wording in the plan says near major transit investment corridors. And investment corridor is defined by the state as public transit right of way, light rail line, or dedicated right of way for rapid transit. Larson Lane does not meet that criteria, the fact there's no major transit investment corridor north of Twenty Third Street. So it is not consistent with that, even though the staff report took out some of the language about investment corridor, which just said transit. But again, even transit is generally defined as mass transit, public transit system. The other thing that is not consistent is that in the plan, the existing plan you have, it talks about transitions between higher densities to other densities to allow mixed use to be that transition. When Walmart was developed, the city stood and said, there will be no development further commercial from seven hundred going north. A boundary is put, no access was allowed on seven hundred north for any type of commercial. And it was felt that the Birmingham that was required was the buffer of the transition. So therefore, having the mass, majority of the development take place beyond that Walmart area and having houses between that, again, is not meeting any transition that is the intent of a mixed use zone or a mixed use plan adoption. Also not stated in that it were several policies that are not listed about compatibility of mixed use with the surrounding uses. This is a donut hole, surrounded by single family home, and now putting in the middle of it, something that's mass, not the other way around, this is what the plan talks about. So based on the facts of what the general plan states now, of all the criteria to evaluate it, this does not comply with making an amendment. And it's not the right time, because other things have to take place. And the other thing is to be compatible with your ordinance. The mixed use zone does not have the standards that your general plan says standards should have. It does not look at transitioning, it does not look at compatibility, and all those issues that the plan identifies are not listed in the ordinance. So it'd be inappropriate at this point to make a plan amendment based on those criteria. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any question.
Well, I should have given Greg my two extra seconds. Oh, I only get two fifty eight also. My name's Aaron Field, I live at two thirty eight east, seven hundred north. Just the property just west of the proposed change. We, this property's been in our family since the Great Depression. My great grandpa raised my grandpa there, my grandpa raised my mom there. My mom raised me there, I'm raising my kids there, and my kids are already discussing who gets to buy our property, our house when I die. So this property means the world to us, it means everything to us. We love Harrisville. And it's, like Greg said, it just seems that putting apartment complexes and townhomes right in the middle of what we've been used to, which is just nice, single family dwellings, is, is pretty, pretty different from what we're used to. We just had the Warren Hollow subdivision to the west of us that was developed. And it's great that it's single family homes, but we used to have a nice view of the sunset, and now we've got a two story house that's, that's whatever, ten, ten or fifteen feet from the property line. So it's, it feels, we feel pretty crowded already. And I don't know, that property just east of me, I think it's maybe two hundred feet wide. It feels, feels pretty narrow to try to put a road through there along with apartments or townhomes. It would, it would push whatever building is there right up against the property line again. We'd lose our view of the mountain, which is why we're here. We, we love Harrisville, and we can appreciate what the state's trying to do to encourage cities to provide more affordable housing. And honestly, I'd like more affordable housing. I want my kids to be able to buy homes in Harrisville, and I want them to stay in Harrisville too. So I can appreciate the fact that maybe we need more homes. But it would be awesome to see nice, big homes, or you know, big lots at least, third acre lots or whatever, and have people move in that want to stay in Harrisville, and raise families in Harrisville. And that's kind of what makes Harrisville what it is, I think, just the small town feel, a hometown, family feel. That's why we love it here, and plan on staying here forever. But at some point, if it's starting to feel like Salt Lake City or New York City, I could move to Salt Lake and cut my, my commute to work in about, well, down by forty five minutes. So anyways, we, we love it, we'd love it to just stay the way it is. But where we don't own the property, we can recognize that people that own the property can do what they want to do with it. But we'd love to see single family homes with, with nice big lots. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Madeline Haas, and I'm at two forty five Larson Lane. And I'm not as spoiled with them, so I'm writing my, what I wrote down. So I know you guys are probably sick of seeing my family at these meetings, but it's because we have generations and generations and generations that were raised here and stayed here and settled down, and they're raising kids of their own too. We've seen all the great that Harrisville has to offer over the years, and we're passionate about our home. And I know you all are too, because that's why you're on the committees you're on. That's why you're, you live here. And that's why I went a few months ago, I met with you about my permanent makeup business. You were passionate about not letting tattooing in Harrisville because of who it might attract. So I'm asking you to look at my home on Larson Lane as if it were your own. My husband and I physically built our home from the ground up, same as my dad did, same as my grandpa did before him. This space was created, it's somewhere we love to be and we're proud of. Lately, we have had some challenges with other new homes on Larson Lane that haven't sold yet. We have had a person walk into our home that broke in. And we've had numerous amounts of people trespass through our field because of the access that the open homes created through our field. There's been so much of approving of buildings and land use that we can't seem to even finish a project in Harrisville, let alone sell the homes that are finished. My area is zoned for single family homes, that's why we built where we have. With changing the plan amendment, it will completely change my home and my view of the mountains to the east, the fields that my children love to see while the animals in all year long, which will be filled with tall buildings. I know you guys don't care about my view or anything like that, but I mean, there is forty years of knowledge sitting behind me that knows, knows the codes and knows what should happen. So there's a struggle already to fill the townhomes and apartments that we currently have. By approving the plan amendment, there will be a domino effect of consequences that my family will suffer greatly from. Most people don't want to live in apartments or townhomes. Everybody my age, I know, they want affordable living, just like Aaron was talking about. That can be done with smaller homes. In an apartment, nobody but one person at the top gets something out of it. It is a space that they don't get as their own compared to a home that's the same price per month right now, a home someone gets to love and take care of and have pride in. Small, affordable homes is something that we should be striving for. Logically, it doesn't make sense to change the zoning now and put apartments and townhomes smack dab in the middle of single family homes. Right in the middle of all their backyards. And then Larson Lane is already such a busy road, so putting a more dense population living area right off the road will cause increased traffic and people walking on the road. And then if the entrance is seven hundred, that's a twenty five mile per hour speed limit, which they won't obey as they're getting into their complex. And it would greatly increase the traffic on that road, which will lead to more paloms and more money out of your guys' pocket.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I gift my time to somebody else? Oh.
You could just come up and say ditto if you want.
I can say ditto, but, and I don't have anything written down. But my name is Tana Field, and I live at two thirty eight east, seven hundred north, with these guys. And I love Harrisville. I spoke at the meeting four years ago, and that was a good opportunity. But something that hit me as I was looking through the city's meeting about today, I don't know if it's meeting notes or, or just something that caught my attention was in here, it talks about the mixed use and infill development. It says it allows for negotiation process to be, take place between city staff and potential developers to meet the general plan vision, which states provide a well-planned, safe, and attractive community, which meets the needs of all Harrisville city residents. So as we've been talking the last while, hey, guess what? Oh, my word, you guys. As our family has talked about this proposal for the new overlay, the thought that occurred to me is that we are Harrisville residents, longtime residents. We've been here a long time. And I feel like you would all agree, this is our city, right? So it's, it's a little bit irritating, I think, when, when a developer who's not a resident comes and purchases land and then wants to change our city's plan. Like, if you think about it, what's your plan? Like, Jordan, when you're coaching, like, you have a plan, right? You want to win the game. You're the coach, you make the call. We are the residents of Harrisville City. I think we should get to make the calls of what we really want. And I think we all love Harrisville for a reason. So why would we let someone on the sidelines call the play? Right? That's kind of the conversation that we've had. So anyways, I don't have much to say, except that in there it says, provide a well-planned, safe, and attractive community. So to me, well planned, we have a plan, and I think the plan is good. It needs adjustment as things grow. That's good, so let's talk about the safe. Since the development to the west of us, we've had strangers walking through our property. I don't appreciate that. Maddie has had someone enter her home, she doesn't appreciate that. If somebody walked into your home you didn't know, you wouldn't appreciate that, right? So this growth in development, this does not meet what is said here about, about safe. Multi-use doesn't equate to safe to me. Where I live now and how it is now, to me, that's safe. And I feel like we're kind of at arms, like, I'm, I'm up in arms, I want to protect what's mine, and I want to protect the safety of my family. Also, an attractive community. Sorry, but I don't feel like apartment complexes are attractive, especially not ten feet from my backyard. Right? Me at the kitchen, looking at strangers. And then there it says meets the needs of all Harrisville city residents, or the residents. So I want you to think about that, as you consider whether or not we should do a overlay.
Thank you.
Hello. Josh Haas, two forty five east Larson Lane.
Josh, what was your last name again?
Haas.
Haas, thank you.
Just echo a lot of what's already been said. I get Utah's growing right now, and you know, there's people moving in, and we need to have more housing. That makes sense to me. And I don't feel like we're trying to be unreasonable. I mean, the land's there, it's for sale, people want to sell it. They're able to do what they want to do. I think the part that's for us, you know, and we're not going to sit here and we're outside there and stand in front of bulldozers or anything to keep them from building. I think we're, we're here wanting to be able to give our opinion. You know, we live there, we've invested in the land, I think we get a say too, what goes on. I think the last thing that we want is, like, as everyone has said, it is kind of an oddity to have all these single houses, you know, single home residents, and then smack in the middle, we're going to do townhomes, apartments, whatever it may be. Just planning, it seems like an oddity. But again, I get it, we're trying to be reasonable, can't stop the land from being sold. Growth is happening, development's going to happen. So I think what we're just, what I'm going to be asking for is turning this down, saying a no on this, and going back to the drawing board and doing something that makes more sense. Because again, we can't, we can't force anyone to do anything. However, I'd like to have a say in what development does go there, since I'm going to be living next to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Shannon Rich, and I'm at two forty two east, seven hundred north. And I'm going to be the one that says, I echo everything that has been said here today. I've been a resident of Harrisville my entire life, minus one year. So we moved away for one year and came right back and settled up into the family property. And so this is, this is my hometown, this is what I love. I might have even been a resident longer than some on the board, I don't know. But, but this is my hometown, and this, our, our little, we call it our little compound. It is our, it's our little oasis, it's our heaven. We love being able to just go outside and be with family. Like they said, like, the traffic has gotten, there's been more traffic that we, we don't know who they are, and we kindly just ask them like, hey, you can't walk on this, this is private property. But along with what everybody else has said, this is, this is our home, and we want to fight for it. This is what we love. And I'm, I'm okay with the single family dwellings, but like they said, like, the bigger lots, because what's been said is our view, our views have been taken away. Our, we, we enjoy the sunset, and now to get a sunset picture, I can't go anywhere there. I can't get a sunset picture, I've got Walmart, or I've got these homes, now that I've locked everything. But I, you can tell that we all just take, we take pride in our home and where we live and where we're raising our children, and we love the way it is now, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Field, I live at two thirty four east, seven hundred north. I'm going to try to not, I knew I was going to cry, I didn't want to talk, because I'm going to cry. I have lived in Harrisville almost my entire life. My son, growing up, used to hunt pheasants in the, where Walmart is now, and, and so that's gone. And yes, I'm a sunset lover, that's one of the things that brings me joy. And there's a big, huge house right in my front yard that I, I can't see the sunsets anymore. And I just, I can't stand the thought of losing my view of the mountains and the peace that we have there. The other day, I came home and there was a FedEx truck in my drive, in my driveway, and he had a package to go in the Warren Hollow subdivision, and he couldn't figure out how to get there. And he, he went down into the ditch and walked over there. I stood there for a while, and when he came back, I said, you get into there from Larson Lane, up there, you know? And like they've said, we've, we've had people walking up through our, our field and, and coming in onto our property. I, I, I don't know anything like what Greg does, I don't even understand what he said, but I know he said something really smart. But I, I thought we had mixed use things like the golf course that's just still sitting there. And we have lots of apartments on West Harrison Road that are, that are, you know, apartment homes and townhomes and stuff for people to live in. And so anyway, I, I agree with what, what everybody else has said. I, I, I know we can't help what's happening, but if there could be smaller homes that just doesn't destroy the, and take away the pheasants and the rabbits and even the raccoons that we have, and the deer that run through our yard, it's, it's amazing and a beautiful place to live, and I've loved it my entire life. And anyway, I appreciate you listening to us, thank you.
For the record, maybe we'd be okay without the raccoons. I think we're probably done. Our family has spoken.
We weren't trying to move anybody any faster than you wanted to go.
Make sure you want to get the opportunity.
Well, probably just one thing. You do have two letters from people who are not our family also.
Oh, yeah, so they get to.
We're grateful to hear from them. And if any of you are having trouble learning about events from the city, we would love to have you reach out to us so that we can try to figure out how best to get the information to you. Would be logical and reasonable.
I'll read this on the, on the letter we got, that wasn't in there. It was again about the development, how it would look like, and how close everything's going to be. Some of the concerns that have been shared, so. Well, if no one votes, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll motion to close the public hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. End of our public hearing. And now we move to discussion item number four, which is a discussion action recommend related to the ordinance we just had our public hearing on, Ordinance 549, which is an amendment to mix use the infill general plan map for all the parcels that listed located approximately two sixty five east Larson Lane. Jenny, going to address more and read your memo.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate all the public comments that were made this evening in our meeting. I have a few follow-up comments regarding some of those submitted, particularly to some of the public comments that were issued to the city earlier today. Where it states that the, the plan, the moderate income plan stuff does not comply with our stated goal. I think a little explanation for the city's position is necessary here for you to have a full understanding of why we are considering this as close to a major transit investment corridor. When staff met with the Department of Workforce Services to determine how the moderate income housing strategies could best be most efficiently implemented for the twenty four options that are allowed under state law, we pointed out that the vast majority of these strategies are directed towards large municipalities who have a variety of funding options and flexibility to waive fees for development that are associated with those potential developments. The small cities, we have limited options to choose from that would not have a detrimental effect on the revenue sources that the city depends on. Particularly since the city implemented the tax, property tax increase in 2022, we've been diligently working to address the public concern at the time to allow more businesses and revenue building options to eliminate any future need to continue raising property taxes. So how is that related to the discussion with the workforce services? The recommendation given by the Department of Workforce Services was to adapt the large city strategies to the local level to provide the benchmarks that were required to, to show that we're meeting those strategies every year. So for example, we don't have a major transit investment corridor like a front runner station or bus corridors in our city, but we do have but we do have corridors in the city that are high in traffic. And that's why Larson Lane was identified in our master transportation plan as a major collector road. So it doesn't meet the definition of the state for a major transit corridor, because we don't have one of those. So we have to adapt that strategy to the local level, which is we wanna identify areas in our city that are close to the high-traffic areas. With regard to the proximity of this proposed area to commercial centers, I actually disagree that the separation of the proposed location by a roadway or burn prevents this area from being identified as near commercial centers, as identified by the other public comments. They have seen increased traffic by not only more development, but people cutting through the area to access the commercial center. I don't know that you can identify other areas in the city that are closer to commercial zones than some of these that are located on that south end of the, of the community. There was also comment made that it does not comply with our land use policies, because mixed-use developments are typically encouraged as transitions. Good planning principles practiced by the city not only include the impact on existing circumstances, but we also take into account the future development of this area. The proposed area is situated adjacent to future commercial development on Washington Boulevard. And the proposed development that's gonna be considered here is an excellent transition between the eventual commercial development on the east and the existing single-family homes on the west. We aren't, um, it's not part of our discussion to discuss a concept plan at this time, because the, the proposed mixed-use amendment does not include a concept plan. But there's been a lot of discussion this evening about apartment complexes and townhomes. The proposed concept plan by this developer includes neither of those options. What they're proposing is a single-family development, but on smaller lots to accommodate inflation and infrastructure costs and also that some of the infrastructure needs of this specific area. So it's, it is consistent with our policy two of the land use policies. And in addition with the infrastructure issues, the sewer on Larson Lane is owned by Ogden City. Ogden City currently limits our connections allowed to their sewer connection. We've been brainstorming future solutions to remedy this, but we have not had success with partnering with Ogden on potential solutions. So to address the infrastructure needs in this area, connectivity to a city-owned sewer on 700 North is necessary for future development in this area, which is on the south end of the proposed area. There is also no secondary water access in this area. Allowing smaller lots will reduce the amount of necessary water usage for a development in this proposed location. The, I also disagree that it's not consistent with policy four of our land use policies. The current mixed-use ordinance, which was adopted by the city council, was adopted for a reason. The mixed-use identified in the public comment was our one project on Washington Boulevard that was developed under our old mixed-use ordinance, which did have guidelines and specifications included in it. What we found was there's no teeth for the city to stand on when commercial development doesn't come in. And at that point, many of you were on the planning commission at that time, and the city council members adopted with intent the current mixed-use ordinance, which allows staff to negotiate for the best use of the land in these areas. If we were to repeal, reenact the mixed-use ordinance and include more specific, it actually doesn't allow us that negotiation opportunity. That ordinance was actually proposed by a land use attorney in the state, and that was why it was adopted at that time. So it gives us more flexibility. I think it's important also to note that the golf course development, after five years of negotiation on that, the city was unable to control when that development starts. It's ultimately up to the developer and the capital that's available for them to develop, even though the city puts in a lot of effort on manpower and hours on staff's time to get these negotiations successful. So in addressing some of the compliance issues for the moderate income provisions, there were some various options suggested, and I think I'd like to review some of those, because they are related to this project. And we, the city did adopt in 2021 an accessory dwelling unit. It, it is an internal accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which was mandated by the state. It wasn't an option for the city to develop, to, to adopt that. We adopted it, and unfortunately, we have not seen the outcome that we anticipated. Accessory dwelling units are driven by private property owners, not developers. It's a single-family home that the family lives in, and they either want to expand for additional family to live with them or as a revenue source for their family. But developers don't, I think it would be preposterous to, to say that a developer's gonna come in and develop accessory dwelling units. That's not good. The city's not gonna see that happen. It has to be driven by the private property owners. And we were hopeful that by adopting that ordinance, that we would see more. But our current statistics that we have to report to the state as part of our moderate income housing report, did not indicate that we've seen the increase in those, in the utilization of that code that we anticipated seeing. And although I agree that the governor's new proposed budget includes financing options for development in single-family homes, our current residential code standards for single-family homes in Harrisville is not cost-effective to meet the affordable housing options. So when we require development on quarter-acre lots and 25-foot setback requirements, we're not able to make and produce a viable project under these circumstances with that, with inflation and the cost of infrastructure. The only other option included in our land use code is the mixed-use, which makes it negotiable. So although the, the term mixed-use has a bad reputation and is often tied to townhomes and apartments, it's not always utilized. And out of the golf course project, a vast majority of those homes were single-family homes in our project. It's also ironic that the cluster development ordinance was mentioned in the public comments, because for the last six months, we've worked with the developer to try to make a good fit with the cluster development in this area. Unfortunately, the cluster development requires lot layout setbacks and site development in a cluster development shall be consistent with the zone closest to the overall average lot size. So for example, if the site development standards in the development are about 15,000 square feet, then it has to meet the 15,000 square foot, the RE15 regulations. Well, the smallest zone regulation that we have is R110, which is 10,000 square feet, which requires 90-foot feet of frontage and 25-foot setbacks. And to make a viable project, it's not, it's not happening. Another suggestion was allowing multifamily mixed-use in existing commercial development zones. I think we need to be very cautious allowing residential in our commercial areas. We have very limited commercial areas on our major corridors in Harrisville. If we start allowing residential, we will lose the, the, the goal of allowing, of having sales tax revenue meet the standards that we want, and we'd have, we'd be faced with increasing property taxes again. That wouldn't be a long-term sustainable option for the city. I also reviewed some of the other public comments that were submitted regarding requesting an additional single-family residential area like Warren Hollow development. Unfortunately, we haven't seen the sales in Warren Hollow like we anticipated. We have the vacant homes to their comments this evening, because they're not selling. We have Ashler Cove across the street here from City Hall that is now being sold to another developer, because they couldn't sell a single lot. That's an RE15 zone. There are 15,000 square foot lots, and they're not selling, and they haven't sold. The, the, the development has been complete for almost six, well, more than six months. It's been asphalted for six months. They could have been building for the last excuse me, year, and couldn't get any building permits issued in that development, because people can't afford to buy those lots. There are some concern by a neighboring property owner about the proximity to their existing home. And one of the benefits of the mixed-use development negotiation is the city staff is very mindful of the current residents. In all of our other three successfully negotiated projects, we've identified areas where the existing homeowners live, and we've asked developers to buffer their subdivisions. And for example, with the MDA development amendment for Dixon Creek, they made some modifications that gave a better buffer with the amendment than we originally identified. So the city is trying to be extremely mindful. The only way for private property owners to control development is to own the property. The city cannot and will not tell a private property owner how they can develop the city if, if we have means to allow them to do a successful development in the city. So I think we have an obligation on both sides to make sure that the city's needs are met and that we protect our existing residents. I have to answer any additional questions that the commission might have.
So is this gentleman with the developer? I am. I think it would be interesting to have him. Oh, it would be interesting for me here. Are you, would you be willing to come forward and just kind of share with us some of your ideas?
Yeah, I'd like you to come forward. If you want, if you want to. I would be great to hear some more of us going in to help alleviate the fears of townhomes and apartments that we've had.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to. I would be happy to. Do you want me to face you or the?
Well, you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, my name is Glaed McCombs, and I represent the, the interests of the developer. And I'm a partner in the, in the development as well. We have worked with the city for quite some time to try to come up with, we're also doing the development on 1100 North. So we've enjoyed our association with the city. We have, in the 1100 North property, I just want to address that for a minute, because maybe that'll help the concerns of the neighbors. In the 1100 North property, that's also zoned mixed-use residential. The mixed-use residential zone does not allow for commercial zone, commercial properties at all, unless it's a small commercial building to benefit the, the residents of the community that's being developed. So on our 1100 North property, the only thing that we have that would be close to a commercial building is we have a clubhouse. And that clubhouse will have a conference room and a couple of offices that are for use of the residents. And we're considering maybe using it as a day office where people can come in from the community and use it as a day office. But there are no other commercial buildings. Your mixed-use residential zoning does not allow for commercial buildings, again, unless it benefits the, the interests of the community. We have no intention on putting any commercial buildings on the development in this, on this Larson Lane property. We have no intention of putting any multifamily houses, which would include condos, townhomes, or apartments. We have no intention of doing that whatsoever. The city told us, and, and as in our negotiation with the city on our 1100 North property, we tend to address things differently than most developers. We came into that meeting, the initial work meeting, we asked the city, we said, what would you like to see in the city? What would benefit the development of the city? And in all of our conversations with the city staff, they have told us that we need more moderate income housing. And so that's our intention for the Larson Lane property, is we wanna do moderate income housing. Now, just so that everybody's on the same page and, and comfort level is hopefully, you know, better with the residents that live nearby, moderate income housing to us does not mean we're gonna build it and slap it up and, and sell it at the lowest price. These are gonna be nice patio homes. They'll be probably two-story, is, is what our thoughts are. They'll be two-story, but they'll be very moderate. They're, they're gonna be very nice structures. We're, we are actually going to be doing very similar residential units to what we're doing on 1100 North. I have been struggling over the last week trying to find plans that I'm happy with, that are nice-looking buildings. These are, these are gonna have stone on them or, you know, veneer product on the front. They're going to be very nicely designed. They're gonna be a very favorable floor plan. And it will be a very nice addition to both the 1100 North properties that we're working on and the Larson Lane properties. So again, no intent whatsoever on doing any apartments, no townhomes. It was mentioned in some of the comments that they would like to see single-family homes on, on those properties. That is our entire intent on the properties that we're requesting the zoning change for, or the land use map adjustment. Those are all gonna be single-family homes. The other comment that was made is that, that they would like to see single-family homes on bigger lots. Well, as Jenny mentioned earlier in her comments, the problem with bigger lots and single-family homes right now is that they are not selling. And we see it one development after another. They just don't meet the moderate income housing. When you're looking at single-family entry-level homes, a townhome, for, for instance, as you, as you see in your own communities, most townhomes, which are now considered entry-level housing for first-time homebuyers, townhomes are $450,000. If you, if you build a single-family home on a third-acre lot, you will not be able to build it right now for less than, and, and price it for less than $600,000. I don't think that meets anybody's definition of moderate income housing. And so our intention is to, and as I talked with Jenny earlier, when we talked about submitting this for, for a change, we did look at the cluster subdivision ordinance. But it's something that you might consider changing in the future, because the, the biggest problem that we have with your cluster subdivision is that, as Jenny mentioned, we have to conform whatever the, with the setbacks and lot sizes for the closest development. Well, it's, unless that, that, unless your building code changes, unless those ordinances change, it's really impossible to do moderate income housing. So how do we do moderate income housing today when costs are so big and so, so expensive? Well, the only way you can really do that is to build smaller houses on smaller lots. Our intention in these lots is, I would say that our, our, the models that I've been looking at over the last few days for our 1100 North property, we're looking at lots, we're looking at home sizes in the 1900 to 25, maybe 3,000 square foot. These are smaller homes. They're, they're more affordable. We have to go two-stories, because again, it reduces building costs. It's just less expensive to build, you know, two-story homes than to build an expansive wide, you know, style home, a ranch-style home. And so really, that's the only way you can do moderate income housing. So you have, you have really one other choice of doing moderate income housing, and that is to do condos or townhomes. Well, we don't wanna put those on that property. That's not our intention at all. We don't think it would serve Harrisville City well. There are areas in here, Harrisville City, where that would be quite, you know, desirable. But we considered that around the neighborhood that we're building, there are a lot of single-family homes that are already existing. To the west, the subdivision that was just under the west, also single-family homes. So we think it's consistent, but we also know that the city desires to, also on Washington Boulevard, to have commercial zoning on Washington Boulevard. So the only way you can provide a buffer between commercial zoning and, uh, single-family housing is to either do townhomes, which would be the, the best use. Now, the lots on Washington, they're pretty deep lots. So I think a good buffer would be to put commercial, you know, the city wants commercial all along Washington Boulevard. I think that's a great use for that high-traffic area. Just behind that, I think it would be a great idea to put patio homes or townhomes. But the next level in, which is where our lot, lots are associated, are located, I think it's ideal to add an additional buffer to the, to the larger, single-family homes to the west, to put in some small patio-style homes. It would be very desirable. So that's, that's kind of what, you know.
Yeah, that's fabulous. Great description. Could you share with me how big of a lot you were thinking about?
Yeah, that's a great question.
We just wanna be careful. This is a general plan amendment discussion.
I don't think we need to get that.
Got you, got you. That's fine. That's all you.
We wanna be careful.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it.
Getting too specific about the concept plan, because that'll come with the zoning change request if this ordinance is passed. But until then, we wanna just be mindful of what decisions being made by the commission this evening.
You know, I'll just, but I'll just add one other comment. You know, I'm, I'm certainly, you know, understanding about the neighbors' comments. Certainly, if they have any questions, I'll be happy to stay after, after the meeting, if you'd like to ask me any, any further questions. I think that you'll find in, and the city has, as we've worked with the city, I think that the city has found us very favorable to work with. We're not a typical developer, and I know you probably hear that, you know, from everybody. But, you know, I've lived in Utah for 27 years, and, and I've been a real estate agent and broker since 2014. I grew up in the building industry. I grew up in the building industry. I pride my, I pride everything, I take pride in everything that I do. And we're going to put, our intention is to put a very nice development. One that would be complimentary and, and attractive for the city.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate your time. That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask a question?
Not at this time, I don't think.
Okay.
Sorry, we've moved on from that. There's a public comment section after we get there, but we're not there yet. So hold your question. Yeah, hold your question. We'll get to that. All right. You guys have other concerns about this? I feel like I need to sit on this for a little bit, think about it a bit, before we send it on to the city council.
I think I'd be fine with a motion to table it eventually. I, I look at two things, right? I'm a homeowner in Harrisville. I've got open land behind me. And if I had a developer coming in wanting to do single-family retirement homes, I would be ecstatic over townhomes. I know exactly what you guys are dealing with. I have the same hopes and dreams for what's behind my house. And so I think we have to look at all the situations at hand and say, what's the best of what we could have happen with what's around us? And I don't think this is the worst option, my personal opinion. But I do think sitting on it and taking some time to review all the details to make sure. But I think this sounds very protected for your guys' interests and probably a best-case scenario, which is what I would hope for behind me, so.
So I have a, I have a question for you, sir. So this, these parcels don't include this, like, gap in between. Is there a reason we're not expanding the overlay to include everything between Washington and the edge of that parcel?
Because the developer has either acquired these, the parcels that were under.
So it's a lot specific then. It's not just to include all of that.
And based on the public feedback we've received originally in the 2019, which is overly, we were minimizing it. Certainly, it would be open to this body whether you wanted to recommend that or the city council ultimately to decide.
I just want to think about that one as well because it looks like we'd be leaving a pocket. But if they wanted to sell, they'd have to come in and do the same thing where it's.
Correct.
That would make a buffer as well, although at the moment, they'd be sandwiched between all of this buffer. So, the way it's.
That's right. The challenge is development.
And also we're developing out of order because it's going to be a buffer between future commercial and future commercial's not there. It's not buffering it yet.
So that's an interesting comment as well because we have this debate. It's always, which came first, right? The commercial or the residential? And our experience, the residential obviously comes first in all of our mixed-use developments.
It brings the traffic first.
Yes. It brings the rooftops. If you talk to developers, they won't develop commercial until they have appropriate number of rooftops. But I'll, I'll admit that not having the commercial on Washington does make it a trickier decision.
So I'm going to.
Agreed.
I'm going to drive those roads and think about that.
Yeah, that's.
It'd be interesting to see how many lots you could get with the amount of frontage they have on those roads too. Just thinking about where you would put roads in and out because you wouldn't be able to put a road through to Washington. So.
So that's, that's been part of our discussion, not going to too much, again, the concept, the development.
That could develop with lots. If it developed first, it'd have trouble getting access, so.
And what would be the best benefit to the existing residents? If we do single-family homes, there's not a high likelihood we would want it to connect to Washington Boulevard necessarily.
Right.
So I guess that would be.
Having out on Larson.
Part of the negotiation process of, of that. Obviously, all of those lots on Washington Boulevard are already eligible for mixed-use, so if they came in, we're possible there.
Yeah. Thank you. And I feel like I need more. I need to sit on this for a month and think about it and then come back to more.
I really appreciate your comments, Jerry, because that's, that's exactly, I think, where I'm at as well. Okay, well.
I'm ready for a motion unless we have more discussion.
Well, what's your?
Anything?
No. Are you okay with tabling it then? For a month? Are you okay with tabling it for a month?
Yeah.
So we can gather some more information.
We could do.
I am definitely more inclined, after hearing his discussion, to, to approve this, but I still feel like you can gather some more information, so. Okay, yeah.
Come back tonight.
Okay, if that's the case, Mr. Chair, I think I'll make a motion that we table the recommended approval for this ordinance, ordinance five forty-nine, until, for a month.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was all of us. This one's tabled. We'll come back to it.
And with that, I'll excuse myself to my next meeting.
Sorry for keeping you so long.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. I think it'd be a treat to fix the boot this event.
No, it's too much for you to carry. I'd be happy to carry out.
I'm sure you would, yeah.
That is us to item number five, which is public comments. This is giving everybody's opportunity to come up and talk for three minutes. And this time, you can talk about whatever you want.
Yes.
You want me to still come up with a Michael?
Please, please, say your name again.
Aaron, Aaron Field, two thirty-eighty, seven hundred north. I guess my, this is foreign to me, right? This is not my business. This is not my, it's not what I do. But I guess my question is, if there's, if this is single-family homes, what, what's the need to change the plan anyways?
Density.
Density? So.
Our existing zones don't allow density in a ten-thousand-square-foot lot.
So can, so would it be appropriate to create a new zone that is single-family homes with a smaller, I mean, a smaller lot or something, I wonder?
Something that, I think we could consider that another day, yeah.
I, and nothing, nothing against you, but I, our, our previous experience with, with the developer west of us in the Warren Hall, it was awful. He, I, I watched that house that's, again, ten feet from my property line or fifteen, whatever the minimum is. It's, if you got a tape measure, it'd be close. I don't know if it's, if it's quite that. But, I mean, that, that place was filled with mud and water when he, when he started pouring foundations. And I'm going, is this house going to be standing in ten years? I, there's no way that, that's, I don't know. He, he promised us, you know, we're not going to take down the trees. The trees are all staying. We, we gave him, we gave him access for the sewer to go through our, through our land, for, right away for the sewer. And he, he cut down every tree along the whole way because you can't have a tree if the house is ten feet from the, from the property line. And so every, every tree's gone. And Jenny, I respectfully, I mean, come, come look. I mean, it's, where I'm a flag lot, I've got my property. And then, is it, is it ten or fifteen feet? You guys would know. The minimum, fifteen. So I've got my property. Most people have a, a road in their front yard that would give them a little bit of a buffer from the, across the street neighbors. I don't have that. I've, I'm, my property and then a huge house. Come, come look. I mean, it's, it's, it's awful. It's really, really awful. So the thought of more two-story houses that are, I don't know, five feet apart, ten feet apart, just like the houses on Legacy Parkway when you drive to Salt Lake. I mean, that's, that's what we're talking about basically, that's going to be west of me, is two-story houses that are ten feet apart, a wall of, a wall of homes. And again, no, no, I don't know. Where, where I'm a flag lot, it just feels, it feels suffocating to, to the thought of, of two-story houses with no buffers. And I mean, I know it's not you guys' fault that I'm on a flag lot, but it's, I mean, we want to stay in Harrisville, but if it feels like we're, we're getting suffocated, I mean, we, maybe we'll want to save our property too. I don't know.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate your concern, for sure.
So a couple of questions, and I, I guess this is where I don't understand. Because as I'm looking at the cluster subdivision, it says lot area, lot width setbacks and lot coverage shall be determined by approval of the development plan. The only thing that the existing zoning controls is the number of units, the density. It says you can have the smaller lots, you can have all those other things there. But, because that's all part of the cluster subdivision negotiation. So I'm not understanding what the ordinance says and what you said. Because the perimeter talks about me matching the perimeter, but it says lot area, lot width setbacks and lot coverage shall be determined by approval of the development plan. So. So that is one question for you. The second question is, or consideration is, the intent of tonight's meeting of what does the plan say and the plan change? That needs to be the key focus. The comment made that, well, we're not going to do housing in a commercial zone. But yet, the general plan says, we're going to take what's zoned commercial and make it mixed-use along Washington Boulevard. We're going to take what's commercial on the triangle between Harrisville Road and Wall Avenue, which is zoned residential, and have that as mixed-use. So there's some inconsistency in that idea of commercial and not having mixed-use in commercial zones. Because right now, you have commercial zones, zone for, potential mixed-use.
There are two mixed-use zones.
Huh?
There are two mixed-use zones.
Yeah, there's a commercial mixed-use zone and a residential mixed-use zone. So the question is, is that what Washington's perceived that?
Washington would be mixed-use commercial, yeah.
Okay. Assuming there's some commercial development, which commercials change and that's not it. Third point, I've got fifty-three seconds left. It's great to talk about what I will do, but I've been in this too long to know how often, once something's approved, it's flipped, and it's flipped, and it's flipped. There is never a guarantee who the developer will be. Once a change is made, I've seen too many times, it's sold, and resold, and resold. Final talk was house sizes. The house sizes he's talking about is still too top, too big for medium density. I'm thinking more like eleven hundred square feet, something like that. That is an affordable housing. Still three thousand fair, square feet is saying, I'm still looking at someone who's got a lot more money to, to do the development. Why not do smaller homes? And smaller homes, you all grew up, we all grew up in nine hundred square feet, twelve hundred square feet, fourteen hundred square feet. What happened is we decided we want more profit in the future, or we want to market so people will have to move and have to move to get to the final product. So those are some concerns I have. One is, the main one is, you've got what the plan is saying, not what could happen, because that will always change. You have no control of, once you change something, who will own it, who will develop it.
All right. Thank you. Good points. Thanks.
Matt, one house two forty-five Larson Lane. I just want to reiterate, reiterate what my dad just said, that, you know, we, it, what's the point in changing this right now when it could not be him developing? And now this has changed, and then we could have apartments, we could have townhomes, we could have these things. Because like he said, he's seen it over and over where, or, or we have had, like Aaron said, developers come and say, oh, yeah, we'll do this, we'll do that, and then it's different. And then you guys can't even do anything because you changed the zoning for it as well. So that's something I want you to consider. And also, kind of as a side note, as I said, we have all built our own homes. So we know what affordable homes looks like. We know what the pricing is to build a home. And we know what, what there is. And like I said, people my age, or people who are starting out, they want a two-bedroom home where they can just get into. That's, that's the goal here. It's just something really small and simple. And yeah, kind of like what my dad said when they said the square footage, that's not a small home. That's not, my home is considered a big home, and those are the same square footage as my home. So if we're looking at small, affordable homes, let's make it small, affordable homes.
Joshua House, two forty-five Larson Lane. Yeah, as we talk about this plan of having things come into there, I'm, I'm definitely happier that it's not townhomes and condos, right? I'm starting to see the dynamics here, right? We've got city interests that have to be looked after. We've got our interests that have to be looked after. And incoming people who are useful for the city to mean their thing, so. It definitely makes sense. Again, want to be reasonable, want to work with this here, but also want to have my say in this as well. Again, we're not going to, we're not going to stop anything. It's coming this way. I'm definitely happier that, you know, smaller home sizes, two-story, oh, what are we talking about, two-story? We got basement and a main ground level. I can get on board with that. Also, you've probably seen my house, right? You drive right down Larson Lane. It's a two-story, thirty-two-hundred-square-foot home. It's big, right? You look at my father-in-laws, you look at the house next to me, we are huge compared to them. We are the size of the ivory homes across the street, right? Three thousand, four thousand square foot, that's a six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home right now. That's expensive. Again, the only reason we were able to do that is because we built it ourselves. I contracted hardly any of it out. It's all done by me and the family. So, you know, as we talk about three thousand, twenty-five-hundred-square-foot homes, two stories, that's still pretty big. Who's affording that today? If we're talking about affordable housing, I echo this, twelve-hundred-square-foot home, fifteen-hundred-square-foot home on smaller lots. And we've all seen this, right? You can drive up to the nineteen, you know, up above Harrison, nineteen seventies, the homes were all built then. You've got two levels, basement, all the utilities are there, and you have the main floor. And that's what we were looking for, me and my wife, when we, when I finally got my job. That was affordable for us. And then the housing did this, and that wasn't affordable as much. But those homes, very close together, twelve-hundred, fifteen-hundred, seventeen-hundred square feet, two stories, basement, daylight basement, and main floor. I think that would go good there. Again, I can't fight everything, but if I get a say on something in the zoning, let's make it something more like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I mean, from a developer standpoint, what I'm hearing the neighbors say is they want smaller homes on smaller lots. Which is, which is different than, than the initial comment, so I'm a little confused. If you'd like to see smaller homes, I mean, we can look at smaller homes. Our, our, probably the starting size of these homes would be nineteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen hundred square feet. We could, that, that would be the smallest we would put on. As, from a development standpoint, you have to build a product that people want, right? I don't know too many people who are going to go out and want to buy a nine-hundred-square-foot house right now. When townhomes are nineteen hundred square feet for a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar townhome, those people aren't seeking, I mean, there's just not a market for a bungalow anymore, you know? Maybe for rentals. And that's the problem. If we built that size of a house, they'd probably all turn into rentals, you know, down the road. Because most people are not, are not looking to buy a nine-hundred-fifty-square-foot house. It's just, it's just not a model that works right now. But we are looking for smaller homes. People are buying smaller homes, and they want the smaller properties. But you have to build it big enough where people will, will want the product, so. But you have to build it big enough where people will, will want the product, so.
If there's no other public comments, we can close the public comments, Jerry?
Could I just say one more thing?
Sure. You may be quick. You know, I'm, I'm also interested too, if, as we, as a city, consider the state requirements for moderate-income housing, where would you recommend that we put that in Harrisville now that you've kind of seen some of the the requirements and the interests and what we've seen? So I, just something to think about.
Okay, let me make my comment first and then I'll address that. It's interesting, I, I ran across today at the post office, a gentleman who kind of sat in and, and started to work on some of Pat Byrne's houses, which was in, you know, the Warren Hall subdivision. And he made an interesting comment to me, he says, you know, I fought Pat to say, your houses are too big. They are not going to sell. You have not looked at the area and what people are looking for in that area. And he said, the interesting thing is all the homes Pat built, and he ignored what I said, and said, no, this is what I'm building, don't sell. The ones he sold off to other people and they made single-family homes in smaller sizes are the ones that are occupied. And sometimes, you know, there's this mindset, this will not work here. Or I will make this work here, and it still doesn't work, it sits. His comment was that the smaller home, the single-story, are the ones that sold. While the other ones are still, eh, still empty. And so I was in this, and he made that comment. It's right to argue with Pat, saying, no, you're building too big, they got to be smaller. Then your question was, um, how to meet the affordable housing parts?
Right, I mean, how do, how do we satisfy the state requirements?
Well, you've got, you've got a list of several items, and I think, Jenny, correct me, is it right now, the city has to have five that they meet, or is it three with our size?
I think it's three that we've already.
We have to adopt three, and we don't qualify for funding unless we have five. So we identified six, because if you don't show that you've made progress towards your strategy, you lose your funding.
Yeah.
And so we wanted to give ourselves a buffer, so we adopted six.
So we have the six standard, so of those six, there are various, those are things that said, we can meet these. As Jenny said, right now accessory dwelling units are not happening within certain homes. But it doesn't mean there's not a market for that. And some things I've seen done are actually building a home with that in it. With the idea that the people who move in can have that space already set up and not have to do all the remodeling to make it work. That's one way that that one standard could be, could be met. The other, you, you, you already have addressed, in that you do have mixed use in the master plan of where it's taking place, and there have been some developments taking place in that. It doesn't say you have to add more and more mixed use. You need to have it in the mechanism so that it can happen with what you've identified.
I think we have a time again, but thank you for going up.
Yeah, no, thanks, Jerry.
If time was perhaps worth, because it's certain. It really was.
Sorry for any questions.
Thirty-six.
Or comments, or anything to come to us.
Did you want us to, me to address anything, or you guys could?
Let's move to commission staff follow-up, and then let's do that.
Okay.
So, we'll close their public comments and move on to attend item number six, which is mission and staff follow-up. So if you'd like, have any follow-up for us, or things you'd like to address, we'd love to hear it.
Yeah, okay. I, I'd love to stop the banter back and forth, but that is obviously helpful for those that are here tonight to, to understand. So to address the cluster development, that, not to be catty, but that isn't something I made up. It's actually right here in the site development. The lot layout setbacks in site development and cluster development shall be consistent with the zone closest to the overall average lot size. So that was the challenge that we found trying to meet the cluster development. What, where we have seen success with cluster development is when a large portion of that development maybe, um, butts up next to a flood zone. And so they're able to use the open space requirements to meet the density bonuses that they need. In other development areas, we, i- it's difficult. Obviously, it's be, it'd be up to the, the planning commission, city ca- ultimately, the city council will men, or, excuse me, the city council, if they wanted to consider a smaller lot size or a smaller zone in our residential standards. So I'm trying to think back through the others, the other comments. Um, I would agree that the reason we don't want to focus too much on concept development right now is because mixed use does open the door for whatever. Uh, what we have seen, um, in the past is renegotiations of those are more successful, then we had a better outcome in Dixon Creek than we even initially did. Um, maybe it's helpful for the public to understand too, those committees that are set up have a planning commissioner and a city council member on there, um, voicing their concerns as we negotiate with the developer.
I'm on the 1,100 North one right now.
Which is helpful, um, so that it's, it's not staff. My job is to provide you guys with the best information I can for you to make the most educated decision you can. I'm not pro-development, I'm not, I'm pro-protecting the city and meeting our standards and saving the residents as much money as we can do during that process. Which is why we adopted the six strategies that we did. Because those six strategies were identified as things that the city is already progressing towards. So to, to the last comment about accessory dwelling units, yes, there are. Ironically, I built an accessory dwelling unit on a home recently. But unless you're prepared to absorb the cost of that in the initial build and hope that you can rent it out at a reasonable rate, there is an inherent risk in that. We were hope, very hopeful that the accessory dwelling. We can anticipate that accessory dwelling units that are external will now be mandated within the next legislative session in 2024, if not then in 2025. Additionally, the governor did list his new initiative for starter homes in his budget. We anticipate in the early rumblings of the city staff, um, moderate-income housing committees that we, that I attend, they're already talking about the mandates that are going to come down on the cities for that, to be met. So if, if public has concern about the restrictions that local governments facing, I encourage them to contact their state legislators because those are the people that are creating these circumstances for the small cities. We don't have the funding mechanisms that Ogden have, has, we don't have the funding mechanisms that Salt Lake has. We don't have a redevelopment agency that we can draw money from to, to do developments. We have to get creative in how we meet these standards, and we don't want to face losing our funding for that. So that's our, my final comment on that. My voice is probably shot by this point anyway.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Any other follow-up?
Thank you to all those that have participated in our events. We had a very successful, kind of shifting gears. And, um, commend the staff, the city staff. I think anyone that had participated in our new stand-up parade, um, enjoyed having that as a new event. We had our city Christmas party last week. Appreciate those that were in attendance for that. And, um, we did our Shop with a Hero event that are, is sponsored by our police department and partners with Pleasant New North Act and Northview Fire and our armed forces. Was a huge success this year. The first year we did it, we had 13 kids. I think the second year we had 18, and this year we did 23 families. 23 kids with our Shop with a Hero. Our Giving Tree is also very successful. That's a, an inception of Mayor Tate, who wanted to start something to give back in the community. And we started our Giving Tree. Were able to help three families this year for Christmas with our Giving Tree. And Walmart's been a great partner for us to help us, um, with those tags. And it's amazing to see the community give back with that project. We'll put a tag on there for a pair of pajamas, and they'll submit five pair of pajamas. It's amazing to see, we'll put a gift card for some, some denomination, they'll double it. And so it's very, um, heartwarming to see how giving our community is. And we, we do live in a wonderful place, and we're proud, proud of our residents that, that enjoy these community events that we try to, to keep going.
Yeah, and can I tell you, I, I loved when they came around with the fire and the grease and everything, and had the, that was, that was a nice touch. It was awesome.
So upcoming events, I'd just like to remind the commission that we do have our retreat. It'll be January 23rd, the fourth Tuesday in January. We'll be doing some new legislative training for a council member and probably conduct our annual training there. And we'll be giving a budget brief to city council about our upcoming fiscal budget.
Twenty-third, six.
The 23rd at six to eight at the cabin.
It's halfway through the budget year.
We are halfway through our fiscal budget year, yes.
You're going to give them an update on the budget year when we have to do.
We'll be doing next fiscal year, actually. We've got our budget worksheets, we'll be working through our 2020. Yes, we do start early.
Do you have any follow-up? Any other follow-up, Ken?
Nope, I am good, thank you for asking.
Well, there's no other follow-up. I'll make a motion that be adjourned. Can I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Oh, David?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, they're adjourned.